Thank God the sun came out. Bless you.
I was getting a little chilled. I'm just looking out in the crowd and thinking to myself, "Boy, I'm glad I didn't wear hose." Comfy, dear? Not the best fashion choice today.
Thanks.
When the sun goes down on my side of town, lonesome feeling is to my door. The whole world turns. There's a rundown bar across the railroad track. I've got a table for two way in the back where I sit alone. I think I'm losing you. I spend most every night beneath the light of a neon moon. If you lose your mind and only, it's always from here for the lonely. Watching broken dreams dance in and out of the beams of a neon moon. I think of tears running wild and free. Close my eyes and sometimes see you in the shadows. The smoke filled room. I'm telling how many tears I've sat here and cried. How many lies that I've lied telling to her. She'll come back someday. But I'll be alright as long as there's light of a neon moon. Oh, and if you lose your mind and only, it's always from here for the lonely. Watching broken dreams dance in and out of the beams of a neon moon. To watch your broken dreams dance in and out of the beams of a neon moon. Watching broken dreams dance in and out of the beams of a neon moon. The jukebox plays on, drink by drink. The words of a sad song seem to say what I think. This hurt inside of me ain't never gonna end. But I'll be alright as long as there's light of a neon moon. Oh, and if you lose your mind and only, it's always from here for the lonely. Watching broken dreams dance in and out of the beams of a neon moon. To watch your broken dreams dance in and out of the beams of a neon moon. Watching broken dreams dance in and out of the beams of a neon moon. Watching broken dreams dance in and out of the beams of a neon moon. Watching broken dreams dance in and out of the beams of a neon moon.
Thank you. That was Scott singing.
They like that one, huh? I guess you better do another one.
Do you have any requests? Shout them out. Chances are we won't do them, don't know them, but shout them out anyway. It might make me feel better.
Here we go.
Love is a burning thing. And it makes a fiery ring. Bound by wild desire. I fell into a ring of fire. I fell into a burning ring of fire. I went down, 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 and the flames went higher. And it burns, 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 the ring of fire, the ring of fire. I fell into a burning ring of fire. I went down, 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 and the flames went higher. And it burns, 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 the ring of fire, the ring of fire. Taste of love is sweet. Hearts like ours beat. I fell for you like a child. Oh, but the fire went wild. I fell into a burning ring of fire. I went down, 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 and the flames went higher. And it burns, 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 the ring of fire, the ring of fire. I fell into a burning ring of fire. I went down, 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 and the flames went higher. And it burns, 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 the ring of fire, the ring of fire. And it burns, 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 the ring of fire, the ring of fire, the ring of fire.
The man in black and blue today. Ring of Fire, perfect. That's why it's darn hot.
Is that outside?
Yes, it is. Did I mention there's water? You could probably use a little of that today. Are you hot, Scott? Hot Scott? I had no one from the Jersey Boys. Well, actually, now people think that it's the Jersey Boys, but it was Frankie Valli originally.
He was from Jersey, though.
That's probably why they call it the Jersey Boys.
Walk like a man. Walk like a man. Every time I cry, every pretty fine, my friend. My mama, my mama, my mama. Girl, you're coming to me. And we said, walk like a man, talk like a man. Walk like a man, like a son. All of this work, rolling on the earth. And walk like a man, like a son. My, my baby, don't you leave me, baby. 'Cause it's getting on my heart. So hear me crying, gonna fall in love. Yeah, just... I'm gonna walk like a man, dance like a girl. Walk like a man, like you. Walk like a man, like a girl. Walk like a man, like you.
Never understood that. Walk like a man, sing like a little girl. Frankie Valli, there you go.
Yep, pretty amazing.
This is why I came out here today. Ben, you've been put off going to the washroom or anything. This might be a good time. I'm going to sing.
Alan, I wish you were out there for this.
Emerging from the depths of the drum kits, one time, one time only, Biggie's Head.
Tap tries to move the heat off the floor. Crispy rock and warm with the smoke. Look out, baby, I don't know what you got, but better begin it. This place is hot now. So glad I'm here. So glad I'm here, keep it down. Give me some love. Give me some love. Give me some love. Give me some love. Every day. Good guy. Oh, I feel so good, everybody getting high. Better take it easy, places on fire. Better hot day, I don't just want to do. Gotta relax now, so should you. So glad you're here. So glad you're here, you gotta. Give me some love. Give me some love. Give me some love. Give me some love. Every day. Good guy. Oh, yeah. Oh, I feel so good, everybody getting high. Better take it easy, nights are fine. Better hot day, but I don't just want to do. Gotta relax now, so should you. So glad we're here. So glad we're here, you gotta. Give me some love. Give me some love. Give me some love. Give me some love. Every day.
Thank you. Actually, I was picking on this lady, the host. You look kind of familiar. Were we ever married?
Maybe, in a warmer life.
Hope it does. Hope it does. These three ladies right up front need polka partners. They need peepies, polka partners. Hey, here's three guys now. Here's your polka partners. Or no? Next time. We got a win.
Roll out the barrel. We'll have a barrel of fun. Roll out the barrel. We got the blues on the road. Jerry and me wandering.
Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, September 8, 2015, at 5:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I would like to call to order, please, and request roll call.
Here.
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 Thank you. Item three is public appearance. That'll be Gwen Madsen for the Arts Initiative, and she is not here, so we will go to item number four, and see if she comes here later. Item four is the village attorney and village administrative report. Item A, discussion possible ash regarding temporary B beer licenses for the ice arena, and they have dropped the 9/11/15 date and are asking for 9/18/15 and 9/19/15. Did I get that right?
Yep.
Okay, so just those two dates in the middle.
Yes, that's correct. I think people are coming for that, Steve.
Okay, that's what I wanted, so we'll wait on that. Okay, so we'll go to item B, discussion possible ash. We got a Growmore downtown project, First Amendment to the agreement to undertake development in the Village of Oregon Tax Increment District Number Three. So, this is Mr. Britner is here to represent that if needed, and Matt, you're up, it looks like.
Yeah, it's a pretty simple amendment. The developer, Growmore, has requested an extension of the deadline to complete work on the project from the current deadline, which I believe is December 31 of this year, to a new deadline of April 30, 2016. That's the only change requested. There's been no request to change, for example, the schedule by which tax increment would be generated and payments would be made. Pardon me, to the village. So, substantively, I don't see this as changing anything, any of the developers' financial obligations to the village. It's just a deadline for completion has been extended. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, see, anybody have questions for Matt or for Jeff?
I understand that then there won't be any additional costs to the taxpayers.
Correct.
Any further questions?
I have a question about the project, but it's not relating to this request. So is that appropriate?
What's your question?
Well, I just noticed that you're already over there today.
Yeah.
Did you wind up excavating that whole lot?
We're gonna end up doing the whole lot.
Because I saw a lot of new stone laid over top, or is that just simply the bulldozer?
That's just breaker rock, because the backside was too silty, so the trucks were sinking in.
I see, so you gotta put rock down to be able to support the weight of the excavators.
Right, we're starting from the street side, and we're working towards the alley, yeah. So, yeah, the front side's all excavated out, and then we'll work towards the alley, and we'll fill it all back in.
And when you excavate the lot, the reason I'm bringing this up is because the last time we had an opportunity to look at what was inside that dirt was 1980-whatever, right? And then it got buried, and grass got put over top, and then we found out that they basically just pushed the entire building inside, and there was question about the ground and what was actually in there. So I figure this is our opportunity to make sure that we know what's in there, and that whatever shouldn't be in there is gone.
Looks like concrete black and concrete.
That was it?
And brick, yeah, best that we can tell.
And did you have to get a Phase One or Phase Two for your financing? Did they have to do soil?
There was a Phase Two done a long time ago.
So we know that the soil's good?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
I'll move approval.
Thank you. Any further comments, Matt? Okay, any discussion questions over here? So we have a motion to second to amend the agreement to undertake development in the Village of Oregon Tax Increment District Number Three, now the Growmore project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So we just gotta stop down and sign it then? So they just have to stop down and sign that agreement?
So Steve, you can sign it tonight, and then, or whenever, and then we'll stop down tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll do my signature tonight.
Sounds good, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Madsen? Are you Mr. Madsen? Okay. So we'll go to item C, discussion possible action regarding hiring MSA in the amount of $3,200 to prepare surveying information for purchasing property for well number six site, and authorize village attorney to prepare the purchase agreement and the water impact fees expenses.
So move.
Okay. Any comments from staff on this?
The map shows the approximate location of the well site, Steve. That's basically at the end of North Burton Boulevard. You can see where it says Netherwood on the north side there. And what we're asking the board is for two things, to approve the surveying agreement with MSA, and then to authorize Matt to prepare the purchase agreement for the property. And this is all being covered by water impact fees.
Okay. So we have a motion to second on that. Are there questions or comments?
Is this being motivated by the fact that we might lose some impact fees if we don't do this?
Correct. Well, and also, too, when I was talking to Mark about this a little bit, actually Jeff was here when we were talking to Mark, it's a possibility that we buy the property, we drill the well, we cap the well, but that in five or six years, this property isn't developed, we may actually activate the well. So we might as well do it when we have the money, to be honest with you. It makes sense, financial sense, to do it.
I'd agree. Is there any chance this site will not work out for a while?
Have we done a well site analysis on that?
Yes, Rookie Milky does.
That was done before me, so I'm assuming that...
So we're good to go there?
Yep. Okay. Back in '06 or '07, Rookie Milky did a site.
Okay, I just didn't want to vote to authorize buying this property and find out if it wasn't suitable or something. That's all I have.
Any other questions or discussion? See, none. We have a motion to second to hire MSA in the amount of $3,200 to prepare surveying information for purchasing a property for well number six site, and authorize village attorney to prepare the purchase agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Should we hold on D for right now?
Yeah, let's...
I think we should, don't you?
Yeah, see how the time goes.
We're gonna hold on C depending upon the time, which ties back to item 4A, but Matt has to get to a meeting and still, too, so if we have to not do one, we would not do item D tonight and do that at the end of the meeting. So we'll go to item E, discussion possible action regarding additional amendments to real estate purchase agreement for 784 North Main, Oregon LLC/Robert G. Hills Jr., right-of-way for Thompson Drive.
This is something that the board has approved previously in connection with Jim Lees and Mary Jo Lees developing some additional lots along Thompson Drive. There was a need for some additional land to be conveyed to the village for public street purposes. Jim Lees, Mary Jo Lees have been responsible for putting that acquisition together, getting the agreement from the landowner to convey that land to the village. They've now, through that process, they have an agreement, which is before you tonight. You've approved a variation on this agreement previously. I think the only, there's just some technical changes to the agreement to make sure we're correctly naming and identifying the landowner, some technical changes like that. There's no cost to the village for buying the land, developers paying all costs associated with closing, and they do plan to close tomorrow. So the request is that the board approve the agreement tonight so that village president and clerk can sign it tonight, they can pick it up tomorrow morning and close.
So we would need a motion to second, please.
So move.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion to second to approve the additional amendments to the real estate purchase agreement for 784 North Main for the right-of-way for Thompson Drive. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item F is follow-up, the Oregon Rotary Trail ribbon cutting, and we have thank you to the following individuals or groups. First, to Chamber Director Judy Knutson, who's right back here, for helping organize the ceremony, the ribbon cutting, and all that. As with all the projects, did a very nice job. We appreciate that, Judy. And she even got us covered from Channel 3, that I know people saw, so it's nice to get a little publicity there. Next thank you is to Bob Lundgren, an Oregon resident, for completing and installing the trail sign by the ribbon cutting date. He had the low bid, and was also the only one that had a chance to get it done by the time the trail opened, and Bob got it done. It's a great sign. For people watching who haven't seen him, when you go down Netherwood to the west, look to your right at Cusick Parkway, you'll see that sign. There's also a sample out in the hallway here for your village hall. Again, a very big thank you to Bob for getting that done and having that installed for that ceremony. Another thank you for all the work on the trail to village attorney Matt Dregney, who is right over here. You know, Mike has said that trails take more work than roads, and that was the case, and Matt was a key player in that.
Absolutely.
Thanks to public work staff for getting the trail ready for the ribbon cutting. Did a great job on that. Jeff, thanks for that. And they were also able to cut an opening from Cusick Parkway onto the trail, so bikers don't have to jump the curbs. That was a nice...
And now the AD ramp is done, too.
Okay, great, good, good. And one that's not on here, because he does the agenda, is Mr. Grace, who put in a lot of hours on the bike trail, and his faithful financial sidekick Lisa Invesco. Financial stuff, Lisa, so we appreciate that.
That's a good term for it.
Could I add one thing?
Yes.
Are you done?
I had one more, but you go ahead, you might have it. I was also going to, not local, but thank the county for getting this all started with a $250,000 grant and additional money in town of Oregon, and the Rotary Club also helped us out with some of the financing. I think all of us, Steve, have heard comments from people about how much they're enjoying that trail, so that's been good. Jerry?
I was gonna add that, but I'll also add that Frank Caruso did a wonderful video, and I was impressed by the quality of it. And is it posted on the village website?
It's on our Facebook and webpage.
Yeah, so it's available on YouTube, Facebook, and the village website. It's really worth watching.
Uh, another thank you for all the work on the trail to village attorney Matt Dregney, who is right over here. You know, Mike has said that trails take more, more work than roads and that was the case and Matt was a key player in that.
Absolutely.
Uh, thanks to public work staff for getting the trail ready for the ribbon cutting, uh, did a great job on that, Jeff, thanks for that. And, uh, they were also able to cut an opening from Cusick Parkway onto the trail so bikers don't have to jump the curbs, that was a nice.
And now, and now the eighty-eight ramp is done too.
Okay, great, good, good. And one that's not on here because he does the agenda is Mr. Grace, who put in a lot of hours on the bike trail. And his faithful financial psychic Lisa Invesco, one of his financial staff, please tell us this, so we appreciate that.
That's a good term for it.
Could I add one thing?
Yes.
Are you done? Sorry.
I had one more, but you go ahead, you might have it. I was also going to, uh, not local, but thank the county for getting this all started with a two-hundred fifty thousand dollar grant and additional money in town of Oregon. And the Rotary Club also helped us out with, uh, some of the financing that, but, uh, I think all of us, these are her comments from people about how much they're enjoying that trail, so that's been good, so, Jerry?
I was gonna add that, but, uh, I'll also add that Frank Caruso did a wonderful video and I was impressed by the quality of it.
Yeah.
Um, and is it posted on the village website?
It's on our Facebook and webpage.
Yeah, and so it's, uh, it's available on YouTube.
Yep.
Facebook and the village website, it's really worth watching.
Yeah.
If you have any interest in that bike trail whatsoever and haven't been able to get out there yet, it's well done.
Yeah. Okay, so we're ready for item five?
As, I think maybe we should do that, I'm gonna go into closed session and then we can come back out and see who's here and, okay.
Okay, okay.
And do that.
So item five is our motion for closed session. The village board may adjourn in a closed session in the meeting pursuant to Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight five one E to discuss a possible use of tax increment financing to purchase property and tip number four for development reasons. So moved. Second, thank you, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, we're going to closed session and we will go next door for that. Welcome everyone, this is a meeting of the Oregon village board, we're in closed session, we're now back in open session. Uh, we left with item four, the village attorney slash village administrative report. And we're going back up to item A, discussion of possible action, temporary, temporary B, beer licenses for the ice arena for two events in September. Are you here to represent this, Jeff? Okay. Yeah.
So it seems like there was some additional information that was brought forward relative to, um, is it state statute? That refers to, uh, different sorts of organizations?
Well, for a temporary license, this type of license sometimes referred to as a picnic license.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I did review with, uh, with, uh, Mike, uh, what the statute says and and the only kinds of organizations that are eligible for a picnic license are enumerated in the statute as bona fide clubs, churches, organizations of that sort. Uh, and, and they're only eligible to obtain a picnic license for, um, I don't have the statute in front of me, but you didn't by any chance know?
It is in the minutes or, um, attached.
Yeah, um, okay. It may only be issued to bona fide clubs, fair associations or agricultural societies, churches, lodges or societies that have been in existence for at least six months and to veterans organizations. And so one question I have is whether the applicant here is a bona fide club. The other thing the statute said is that, um, I don't have the actual statute in front of me, but, uh, you can all.
Let me look it up. Maybe on the back.
The other concern I have is the type of event that there's, that you can get a license for, um, so I will look it up.
Oh. Oh, here, man. He goes on the back side. But on their application, actually it's on the upstate application, on the back side.
One second. This is one twenty-five.
So, um, are you looking for definition of club, Matt?
No. Um, one second, I'm almost there.
Do we have the Jeopardy music that we could?
It would be good. Uh, let's see, temporary. Here we go. Statute doesn't define club, by the way, uh, but it, it may only be issued to bona fide clubs, county or local fair associations or agricultural societies, churches, lodges or societies that have been in existence for at least six months. And then it says, for the purpose or, or the license is to authorize the sale of fermented malt beverages at a particular picnic or similar gathering at a meeting of the post or during a fair conducted by the fair association or agricultural society. So I think there are two questions that I have about whether this applicant is eligible, one is.
Can we introduce a third real quick?
Sure.
Um, the section one twenty-five point oh two sub four.
One twenty-five point oh two sub four?
Yeah.
Let me go to that. Okay, oh two sub four, oh, here is a definition of club. I mean, means an organization, whether incorporated or not, which is the owner, less here, I believe, which is exclusively for club purposes. Which is operated solely for recreational or internal socials, well, that, that suggests, that does give us some, uh, something to work with in terms of defining club that I didn't even know was in there. So question one, is the applicant here a bona fide club? To me, doesn't seem that it fits within that description. And is the license for a picnic or similar kind of event? Doesn't seem to me that it is, um, this is an organization that is wanting for commercial purposes to lease its space out for hockey games and wants to sell beer to raise revenue at those events. That strikes me as not what this statute was intended to provide for. If an organization like this would like, and, and, and the other thing that's interesting to note is they've asked for a series of licenses, not just for one, but for a series of events. I don't believe that the temporary picnic license statute was intended to allow an organization like this to obtain a series of picnic licenses to sell beer at hockey games. I, I think it, it was, uh, intended to allow, as it in, as the statute says, a, a church group or a club. Like if it was the hockey club itself, if it was an amateur hockey club and they wanted to have a picnic and they wanted to sell beer at their picnic, that would be one thing, but if it's a, uh, a landlord that is, you know, leasing space or ma, or using its facility to host events and invite spectators in and sell beer to those spectators, I don't think that's what the statute was intended to provide for.
What, what, what would be your understanding of pecuniary gain, how would that, how would you translate that into common speak?
For profit.
And it says for not, but not for profit, it's supposed to be this, a possibility for this type of license would be if you were not, if it was a not-for-profit.
Example is the, the Rotary Club gets one.
Right.
Every year at, for, you know, at the Gorman Building, it's, you know, they're not, obviously the Rotary Club is not a for-profit, yeah.
And, and the Chamber has one, right, same thing, for Summer Fest, and the same thing, yeah.
And if you.
Don't be dragging Judy into this.
She's all fired up.
She's not listening.
She's not listening, I'm very.
There, but, uh, if, if this, um, say the admirals were, had a facility of their own and they're gonna play games there and they wanted a, a liquor license, would that be a class A that they'd get then instead of a class B?
Well, no, they'd get a class B, but it wouldn't be a, wouldn't be a temporary picnic license.
Wouldn't be a temporary picnic license.
It would be a regular class B license to sell beer, it's good for, you know.
No, I got it. I, I've.
This kind of license is for a one, you know, for one event, one time only, we're having a picnic.
But now I see it's gonna be for a series of.
I think they've applied for four.
Four.
Now it sounded two.
Oh, for two events.
It was three originally.
What is the logic of doing that?
Well, it's, it's two most recently, right, I mean, ultimately they're gonna be coming back for every Whalers game, right?
You would, you would think.
That's our assumption.
So whatever discussion we're having now, we might as well just do the math out, I'm guessing.
No, but I mean, they, when they came in before Jeff, they wanted a license for.
All the Whalers games, yeah.
Season.
Right.
And now, I, I wish somebody was here, I don't understand what's going on now.
Well, they're, they're asking for individual licenses for each game.
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead, my, your man.
My supposition is that, and again, they're not here to answer the question, but Mike, and I asked Mike, why are they doing this? And the only thing I could think of is that they may have thought, well, they can see that the board is nervous about granting a regular class B license because once they have it, they have it and can't take it away. And you may recall that the conditions I drafted associated with that license were structured so to try and require that they come back and get approval again a year from now so that they would, so I'm guessing that they were thinking that the board would have less concern about granting, you know, a one-time license or two one-time licenses because it's only good for those events and then the board could reassess, you know, what, whether or not, if, if the board was satisfied with how it went or not. But I'm speculating here, I mean, that's my speculation is that they, they must have been thinking the board would be less nervous about this kind of license because it's, it goes away.
Well, we've done that before, right? Where, we've granted them a license before, right, for class B beer.
But I think the last license was a regular class B, it wasn't a temporary.
No, no, they, just right, we, we gave it to a.
Gave them a picnic license.
A parent, a parent group had a fundraiser there last year, was it?
Something like that. Have you addressed the three hundred foot concern that came up in statute at the last board meeting, have we marked that off or?
We, we dug into that a little more deeply and the statute says that that three hundred foot separation distance between the entrance to a school and the entrance to a class B premises only applies to a license that is, that allows not only the sale of beer, but also intoxicating liquor. The kind of license they're applying for is beer only.
Yeah.
So I, that three hundred foot separation distance does not apply to this type of license.
I didn't s- go ahead, Doc.
I was gonna say, I didn't see any evidence that they tried to address the school's concerns about the sale of alcohol close to a, a location facility. So I, it's disappointing that there is no evidence made to say that they've touched the base, uh, the school administration worked on those concerns, so.
You know, based on the fact that there are so many questions here and so many unknowns, um, and the fact that the school opposes this, I'd like to hear why, um, how that's gonna be dealt with, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we deny this request at this time, um.
And the reasons I heard expressed, uh.
Let me see if we have a second, okay?
Oh, okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, man.
I just wanna make, uh, sure I understand what the rationale is because what, we have to give notice in writing of your denial and have to state the reasons therefore. So what I heard you say, trustee Balig, where you had concerns about unanswered questions raised by the school district.
Well, number one, I don't know why they're coming back, uh, a couple of weeks after their initial request. When they asked for a whole season and now they wanna do it piecemeal, that makes no sense to me. There are questions about whether this is even a proper license for them to have, number two. Uh, number three, they aren't here to address any questions the board might have. And number four, um, a major partner of the village, which is the school district, uh, also a, uh, has gone on record as saying they oppose giving them a license or to serve alcohol in that facility. And, um, I, I think that's enough, I mean, I could go on further, but, uh, and to say that, you know, I don't think youth sports and alcohol should be tied together, you know.
And that's a key thing for me too, it's, it's a primarily a youth sports facility and I don't think they should be selling alcohol there.
Could we just give clerk a minute to get this down?
So it's, it should, the motion passes, that should go through.
So if the motion passes, I want the minutes to reflect the rationale that was just provided.
Is that enough, Matt?
That's good, I have plenty.
And, uh, if I could make a comment, uh, con, uh, for the minutes. I think from my perspective, when I'm, when I'm trying to make decisions that are brought in front of me, I try to look at the opposing viewpoints and find the how. And one of the, one of the things that I'm very proud of is that the school board did that. School board said, look, we, we don't really like this idea, however, if you do these following things, we can see our way through, through to it. And to me, um, that's how, that's how I like to govern forward. Um, so for that reason alone, uh, I am not in favor of denying a liquor license to an establishment that hasn't had a problem in the past when they've had it. Um, and has a justifiable reason for wanting to serve beer. And, and I think just in my own sentence, you know, this whole idea that this is a liquor license, to me, that's, it's a little bit misleading, this is a beer license for people to be able to drink beer at a sporting event. And, and, uh, and so I just wanted to make sure that that rationale was part of the minutes so that when I vote against the motion, it's not just simply Jeff being obstinate.
I don't think Peggy, how are you doing, do you have Jerry's rationale?
I guess we're talking faster than Peggy's fingers.
Um, KKKKKLZZZ.
Brian, tell me where you start.
Okay, stop there, it's, that's, uh, the rationale, trustee Baller, I'm starting to care about here.
So, so Jeff, I'm kinda going back at the, looking at the, the information I got from the school district. So you, yeah, you're right, the, in the staff, the staff memo, when Dr. Busler wrote to the board of education on August tenth, he, he had three, oh, he, he recommended three things that if, um, as a solution to the liquor license. But, but the actual email I got from the attorney, um, that same night was that the board's preference is that no alcohol is, is served at the ice arena. So I think the staff said one thing, but I think the board voted seven zero to say the board shares the following concerns, that does not want students exposed to alcohol, alcohol-related signage during the school day or at a district-sponsored event. So I think they're actually saying they did not want the alcohol in, in the building, so.
Right, and, and that, but that's, um, that's exactly my point though, Mike. Since you're on that, that memo, can you flip that over and, and read, uh, what Brian Busler followed?
Sure, yeah, so he's, he's saying the administrative team is open to the Oregon Ice Arena and the village of Oregon finding a solution to the liquor license request, provided that, provided there is not alcohol on the premises and the areas used by students, number one. Number two, alcohol is not served when students are using the ice arena for district-sponsored events. Number three, there is no alcohol-related signage present when students are engaged in district-sponsored events. But, but I, well, I'm not trying to interpret what was said, but I think, it seemed like the board was saying they don't want any alcohol served in the ice arena. So I mean, Brian was sort of saying if you're gonna do it, maybe consider this, but they're like saying.
But what's interesting though is that the.
I'm not debating this with Jeff.
They've kind of crafted, if not the beginnings of a great compromise, they've crafted a compromise. And to me, that's the art in governing that I will always strive for, is a compromise where all parties feel that they're represented in the decision. Whenever possible.
And I don't dispute that, Jeff, and you make some good points, but the point I'm trying to make here is that if Mike goes out and works with a community member and says, oh, it's okay to do this and they brings it to us and we say, no, it's not, the board rules. And the school board has voted unanimously not to allow, uh, to recommend, I should say, not to allow alcohol in that facility, so. And, and that's wherein lies my, you know, the purpose for my motion, along with basis for my motion.
Go ahead, Eric.
I just have one question for Matt, in the past, the same organization has come to us for other sporting events and we've given them this license to sell beer, correct?
Yeah, that, that alumni, alumni tournament in May, yeah.
But I thought it was a different license.
So are we setting ourselves up for any kind of problems if we all of a sudden start saying, well, we shouldn't have gave it to you in the first place, we're gonna say no now?
Uh, no, uh, just because you make a mistake once doesn't mean you're forever required to keep making that mistake.
Matt, I thought you indicated that we gave them a different kind of license in the past.
I don't, I don't have any idea what exactly li- what license they were given and I also don't know exactly what the nature of the event was. Who the applicant was, so I don't wanna talk about the past one. I think the important thing is to focus on this application and make the best decision we can on this application. The fact that we did something in the past, I, I don't think we should worry too much about it, let's try and get this one right.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
If we deny this, that doesn't mean they can't come back for a picnic license for, say, that alumni tournament again.
Right.
Cause that fits the definition of a picnic license.
But we don't know if this organization fits the definition of a club.
Depends on who the applicant is, you know, if, if, if the alumni hockey group, if they, if they have a club
and they wanna have an event at this arena and they come in and apply for a license for a pic, for an, an event. I would look at that and, and evaluate it on its merits and then you would decide, A, are they eligible, they might be. And B, even if, this is a two-part question, part one is eligibility and we have significant questions, or at least I do, about whether they actually are eligible for this license. about whether they actually are eligible for this license. Then part two is even if they're eligible, the board still has the discretion to decide whether to grant the license or not based on additional considerations such as those I've seen discussed tonight. If the board denies the license tonight, my intent would be to send a letter to the applicant explaining that the application was denied for the following reasons, and I would provide all of the reasons that I heard expressed by the board tonight, which I, I think fall into both the eligibility category and the question of whether it's in the public interest to, to grant the license.
Thanks, Peggy. And I'll go on to say too, last time we went through this exercise, it was for the whole season, and they had a spokesperson here, and we went through, what do we, do we have two meetings on that or just one?
At least, at least, at least two.
At least two. And we talked about the whole universe of conditions that we.
Yep.
Could possibly consider. And we took a week off to, to think about it, and we're gonna come back and craft that. They pulled it. And now they're coming back with a totally different, um, request, but no one is here. So I don't know how we could possibly grant it under those conditions.
So further questions or comments? So we have a motion, a second, to deny the request for temporary B beer licenses for the Ice Arena Incorporated. I would request roll call, please, when Peggy's ready. Take your time. I think the motion is to deny, so I guess vote and say you agree with deny.
Udo?
No.
Steve?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Brett Howard?
Yes.
Balig?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So those license, those licenses, as requested, are denied. And they will receive a letter from Mr. Grigney.
Yes.
To that effect. Thank you. So item D on the memorandum about compliance checks, we will hold that until Chief Uhl will be here. We did dismiss him, uh, earlier from the meeting when he was here. So we will go to the next page, which is approval of minutes.
So move.
Okay, I gotta read that, I gotta read it first. I moved that the village board, well, actually, why don't you just go ahead and read on the seven A, Jeff, that's what we need to have.
I move that the village board acknowledged that the following minutes prepared by the village clerk's office are the official minutes of said meetings. October seventeenth, two thousand twelve, October twenty-second, two thousand twelve, which was the first budget meeting, October twenty-ninth, two thousand twelve, which was the third budget meeting, September seventeenth, two thousand twelve, July fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, August fifth, two thousand thirteen, August nineteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Thank you. So then we need a second.
Second with the correction that it was December seventeenth, not September seventeenth.
Oh, that's interesting.
Did I say September?
Yep, you did.
And I looked at December?
Following my example, that's.
Man.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We then have item seven B, special meeting, August twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen. Need a motion, a second, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Steve, can we go back and, um, just walk in and run to the. Yes, please.
Okay, so we're going to go to item twelve, reported committees. So that's what you're here for, right? Okay, thank you. I should've asked sooner, I apologize for that. Item A, the park board meeting, September second, two thousand fifteen, and Trustee Brett Howard is our representative, so Doug, I'll let you take over on that.
The, uh, park board met last week, uh, and her presentation made by the individual who is here from the soccer club, Artic soccer club, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, Eric. Thank you. Uh, for doing field maintenance of six soccer fields by Maple Leaf Law here. This is something that's been done, I guess, every year for the last number of years, and it's a new provider of this, of the service. And on the back of the agenda, I believe, on the back of the minutes, you can see which fields the fertilizer and other chemicals will be applied. I think it's part twelve eight. Do you wanna take a look at it? It's the last page of the, of the agenda for tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? So we have a motion and second to approve the request of the SOC Association to provide field maintenance as requested, provide they work in the school district and other sports organizations use the fields and provide proof of insurance to the village. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You're all set. Thank you.
The second item is to approve an additional five thousand dollars for wood chips in two thousand sixteen budget and five thousand dollars to update the Village of Oregon Park Recreation Plan.
Second.
Thank you.
So, so if this, this gets approved, then we'll show this in the general fund park board budget under department column, and that guaranteeing that we're gonna be able to find the money to put it in my column when you get the budget.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Yes, Jeff.
Just a clarification, um, we confirmed that the five thousand dollars, uh, for wood chips are actually under the maintenance part of the budget, not within the park.
Yeah, the general fund.
The general fund.
Yep.
Um, because the, uh, park, uh, budget is strictly for new park, new park planning.
Okay.
Uh, so but the, we would add the five thousand dollars at least under the draft budget at this point for the recreation, uh, plan update.
Okay. And if we approve this, this means we have to find the money, right?
Yep.
No, okay. I want to clarify that.
It would, I'm saying it would, it would, we'd put it in the department head column and you get the budget.
Yeah.
But unless we can find, well, the board, the board's decision at the end of the day, but it, I'm just saying that it may not be able, we may not be able to find ten thousand dollars, maybe we'll find five thousand.
Yeah.
One thing I mentioned at least this morning is, I wanna see if we actually have to update the plan, because if we apply for stewardship grant, that's the reason you, you do that plan.
Okay.
I mean, you should do it anyways, but it's every five years, you have to update it. I, I think it may be a year to really, but I may be wrong. I mean, we'd have to, we'll take a look at it, so.
Yeah, look at Jeff, good.
So basically, we're gonna be dealing with this at budget time.
Mm-hmm. I, I always ask the park board to give their input into the budget.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And then, so then, we can talk about this when we're having the joint meeting with them in October.
Okay.
Among other things.
Yeah, good. Anything else? So we have a motion, second, to approve an additional five thousand dollars for wood chips and five thousand dollars to update the Village of Oregon Park and Recreation Plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So now we're back to item eight.
Yes.
Okay. So item eight is approval vouchers. Uh, we have vouchers tonight in the general operating fund in the amount of two million, seven hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
So.
Go ahead.
So move for discussion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So are there questions?
I have a question about the entry for BMO Harris Bank. I understand the investment, but I'm not used to seeing that show up in vouchers payable.
We ha, um, I closed a money market account at a different bank, and as I called around, BMO Harris had a good rate, so I opened up a new CD with them.
Right.
So I have to generate a check in order to open up the account.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, saying none, we have vouchers to approve, the amount two million, seven hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. Roll call, please.
Balig?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Staden?
Yes.
Udo?
Yes.
Brett Howard?
Yes.
Thank you. Item nine is community input. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board at this time? Nice try, Jeff. Item ten, proclamations and announcements. Item A, board comments. Anybody have any at this time?
Uh, I just wanted to make one comment about the, the Rotary Bike Path and, and what an amazing coming together that whole project was. And I know that the board has tried in many different times, in many different ways to thank everybody that was involved, but my comment would be a, a catch-all to anybody that wasn't thanked officially, um, that I appreciate their efforts, whether it was as simple as a compromise or as grand as a cash donation. It's hard to remember.
Everybody.
All the people. And I would never want anybody to feel as if they were left out on purpose.
Good, thank you. Anything else from the board? We'll turn to staff comments. Item, it's item B and item A under that. The budget meetings.
Just reminder.
Yeah.
Mike, is there any reason why we can't start at five and get done a little quicker?
We, yeah, you know what? We've always done it that way. How's that for an answer? No, we could start at five, sure.
I don't know how the rest of the board.
We've been starting at five at dinner, right?
That's, that's true.
Maybe at five thirty, we'd have dinner at four thirty.
Yeah.
Right, that's kinda, I thought we always did that.
We always, she's right, we would, I, when I, the meeting itself starts at five thirty, then I noticed on the top that the board will be gathering for a late.
At five?
Yeah, but if you wanna start the meeting at five, we would just have dinners.
I'll leave it to the rest of the board. I don't wanna, if, I don't wanna cause someone stressed by having to come down here early if they.
Cause maybe.
I think four thirty is pretty early for dinner as well as, um, there's no work.
So leave it at five thirty, okay.
Very good.
Yeah, no, I.
Jeff, that's a lot of traffic.
I was thinking being here at five, but I forgot about the food.
Yeah, it's easy for three of us.
I just won't beat the board this year, how about that? We'll start at five.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen.
Wait a minute, I, I never, I didn't think of that.
Yeah, I know, I know you didn't, Jerry, I know that.
Okay, we've got item eleven, uh, eleven A, uh, public forum for the Keller Alpine Meadows Park. Please, uh, September sixteenth from five PM to eight PM at Peoples United Methodist Church at one oh three North Alpine Parkway. This is for public input and so on.
So, so we're gonna notice this as a, a park board and a village board gathering. This is just, way at the beginning, we're gonna get input from organizations and the public about the use of the park. And it's, it's a series of meetings that will take place after this.
Thank you.
Several board members, park board members are planning to.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna notice it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else on that one? You'll go to item B, status report, a space needs study on civic campus plan.
I just wanted to give the board, um, an initial, I emphasize initial square footage of, uh, what we, that we got from Architect after he met with the department heads. And you can see that we're just about, you know, more than doubling what, what we think we need.
Yeah.
I, I will emphasize that we had, we had a really good meeting with, with, uh, his name is Cliff, and, and, uh, Brian Munson and Mike from, uh, Vandewall. And these, these numbers are gonna change because, you know, depending on where things go, we may end up sharing, you know, committee rooms and so, again, these are, these are just overall ballpark numbers at this point. They'll be fine tuned. I, I imagine, um, I'm anticipating we gotta get to the, the budget, you know, either November, December, we'll have Cliff, the architect, and Mike Vandewall come here and, and give a report on the space needs study and then also status report on the civic campus plan, so.
And one thing I'd like to mention, um, for, from a historical perspective, in, in any event, since this is sort of a conversation that's building over time, uh, it, it was curious to me when I looked at the photo outside the doors here and saw the crew from nineteen forty-two.
Yeah.
Building this building.
Mm-hmm.
All of the various different parts of the government and the village that were housed in, in this building.
Yeah.
And, and in fact, this building was the central campus. So I don't know what the population was in nineteen forty-two, but my guess is, is it's probably come close to double.
Boy.
Since forty-two.
I think so.
So the space needs to double.
Yeah.
Um, and we've, kind of reflecting the growth of the community.
Yeah.
To me, makes sense, and, and that's pretty much what the.
I, Cliff did not think these numbers were that out of line, the projected numbers at all, no.
So it's very interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else on that item?
Uh, one other comment on the food pantry and the, uh, no need to be downtown. Um, so we had an opportunity at the Oregon Community Resource Network to talk a little bit about what the, um, clientele of the food pantry would like to see. And the majority, well, forty percent of the people that were surveyed said downtown was the best location, and about twenty-six percent said that they would prefer it not to be downtown. The other thirty percent or so, um, really didn't have a inclination one way or the other, but their main concern was parking. And if parking was gonna be impeded in a downtown location, then they would elect to have it someplace where there was more parking. Uh, so that brought up an interesting thought relative to the study we've done to this, to this point. The study has been about square footage needs of the various departments of the village government and the, and the village itself, but not so much about, um, what the parking needs would be to support that kind of square footage.
We're, we're talking about that as well, yeah. Actually, that will affect when, so when the space needs study gets done and, and Vandewall starts moving parts around downtown, that, it will come into play big time about the parking arrangement and the timing of the parking, you know, when it's busy and so forth. So, no, we're talk, we're starting to talk about that element.
Anything else on eleven B? Proceed to item eleven C, discussion possible action. Resolution number fifteen eighteen requesting exemption from the county library tax. It's a yearly action, right? If you wanna explain that for everybody here and the viewers, please, Susan?
Yes, it's a, it, it is required for you to, um, sign off on this exemption in order to be exempt from the library tax, because you have a wonderful library right here in Oregon, so you don't have to pay the tax. While the communities who don't have a library do pay the library tax, so it's a win-win.
So move. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
And, um, Susan, I hope on, on the list of things that you give to your successor, this is up in the top ten to please bring this back to the board every year, cause I don't know if I'll remember.
Oh, no, they.
We, we get a notice from the county.
Yeah, Dan County sends it to me and I give it to Mike and they get it on there, yeah. And I'm sure they'll know.
It's kind of an automatic each year.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a twenty-page document, Jeff, so far, so.
So far.
Just twenty.
Any other questions or comments? So we have a motion, second, to approve resolution number fifteen D H eighteen requesting exemption from the county library tax. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Go to item D, discussion possible action regarding advising the, revising the appointment list, excuse me, the appointment list, and it's primarily uh, putting Chief Uhl on the O.K. Advisory Committee and the Master Plan Committee, right?
Yes, and, yeah, showing Jeff as a Pub Works Director and just changing up your full numbers, yeah. But yes, it's mini for Brian, it'd be nothing, you know.
So move.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E, review of letter from Lieutenant, uh, Police Lieutenant Pagankov regarding National Association of Women Law Enforcement Executives Conference. Let me get to that here. This letter was actually, uh, in our last packet and on the agenda, but, um, somehow I seem to go by it pretty quickly, so I asked it to be brought back so we could highlight some. Lieutenant Pagankov attended the National Association of Women Law Enforcement Executives in Connecticut, uh, August fifth through August eighth, uh, attended a number of breakout sessions such as the Sandy Hook School Shooting, Domestic Violence Lethality, FBI Terrorist Screening Center, uh, presentation, and FBI Violent Criminal Apprehension Program and a leadership session as well as other training sessions, and felt she also did a lot of good network. So, uh, just wanted to thank her for, uh, taking time out for duties here to go to this and, uh, let people know that this, that she did attend this and that, uh, we do appreciate that. So, anything to comment or not? So, I think the only thing requiring action is back to the first thing, right? Item three A?
Yes.
Okay. Cause the next item was adjournment. You got, you got here just in time.
No, I would like to speak to the board.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I couldn't find a PowerPoint machine either. My furniture came from my house and I have a whole list of excuses for not being here on time, but basically I owe everyone on the board an apologize for, or an apology for, um, spacing it out. It's been one of those days.
Okay.
Second.
And to add, it, I, and some people stopped by and I hadn't seen them in eight months and it, I was sitting down thinking, I'm supposed to be, so. If I may ask, um, to be rescheduled at another time in October or later September.
Feel free to communicate with Mike and get a time for that.
And Mike, thank you very much. I, I, again, uh, this is not a usual happening for me, so I, I owe the board an apology.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you stopping by. And we'll see you in the future.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, man.
It's a good thing and it's a great PowerPoint, so.
We'll look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So item thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, are, there's no action, so we'll go to item seventeen, which would be a motion for adjournment.
So.
Second. What on earth?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, everyone.